All right, we'll reconvene to regular session at 7:00 PM. Roll call please, Ms. Bell.
Good evening, everyone. Ms. Cardoza, Ms. Benitez, Ms. Obadoza, Ms. Lahano.
Here.
Ms. Delmacio.
Here.
Ms. Tahara.
Here.
Ms. Don Chipinti.
Here.
Mrs. Inger.
Present.
Ms. Salahodin.
Here.
And Mr. Lee.
Here. Okay. Ms. Obadoza, would you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge to the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, item nine, approval of the agenda. Dr. Dory, are there any changes to the agenda?
There are not. Consent.
Is there a motion to accept the agenda?
No motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay. There is nothing to report out of closed session, so we will jump ahead to item 11A, recognition of the 2018-2019 Jefferson Union High School District Student Trustees. Thank you to Jessica Delmacio, Chanel Lahano, Angelina Obadoza, Erica Cardoza, and Valeria Benitez-Noyola for their service and commitment to the Jefferson Union High School District while serving as student trustees for the 2018-2019 school year. Ms. Obadoza, would you come up? Yep. Don't come up, I'm going to eat.
My one bowl.
Oh, we can talk.
Thank you so much for your service. All three of you. Guys, I'm not going to say anything to say.
Well, I think we should do it in the lines, but...
Don't take a picture.
Who wants to kick this off?
So Chanel's going to be back next year, so we're very happy about that. She's only a junior, and, um, but two of them couldn't make it. I mean, this just speaks to, you know, our students are incredibly busy, and they have a lot of stuff going on, and to make the time to sit through a board meeting where there's a lot of discussion of policy and a lot of things that may not be extremely interesting, but the students take the time to represent. Erica has another board member from Jeff. Oh, there she goes.
One way, one way.
So you got here just in time, because I'm just about to gush over you. So Erica has been on our board for two years. She's been representing Jefferson High School extremely well. She came with us to Sacramento and lobbied on behalf of the district to legislators. She's spoken about passionately about mental health and how she likes to see, would like to see mental health, more mental health representation in staff on the school sites. And she's just been an incredible ambassador for Jefferson High School, and I'm just been so honored and thrilled to have you here with us, so thank you for everything you've done for us over the past two years. Erica, you've been one of the models for our current cohort of trustees, and you've been a great model, and I'm super excited for your future.
Thank you.
And Angelina, she's just a quiet passion that you have about you. You were one of the leading drivers in our survey and getting the survey and the presentation together. I was really worried about having representation from Westmore, and I'm really thrilled that you stepped up to represent Westmore High School, and you've done so with a grace and dignity that is just beyond your age. And so I have just, again, I've learned so much from you and everything that you've brought to the table, so thank you so much for everything you've done. And Chanel, I'm so happy to have you back to represent Oceana next year. Again, there have been times when our room is a little overcrowded, because we, last year, we were tearing over heavy, and it was kind of hard to speak up about that, and so I'm just so happy that you had the strength and courage to speak, to speak that truth and really push us to be more representat, have more representation and be more balanced in our inclusion and make sure that all student voices are heard. So again, just a very quiet courage and strength that I, that I really admire. I'm excited to have you back next year. And then Jessica, again, there are times when I'm thinking, I don't know if a student's going to have an opinion on that, and then you have one, and it's something I didn't think about, and it's so well thought out, and again, I've just been blown away at what you've been able to bring to the table as a teenager. And I think about back when I was a teenager, and I was never that well together, like that put together. So I've learned so much from you, and I'm, you guys are the reason why I'm not worried about the future, especially when it comes to women representation and women leadership. You are phenomenal women leaders, and the world better watch out. So thank you guys all so much for everything you've done for us this year.
What she said. I, um, it's, it's almost like when I look at you, I think about where I was when I was at Jeff. And I was always the quiet one who spoke only when there was something I thought needed to be said. And I see that in some of you, but you are so much more outspoken and, and truthful and fearless, that you stick it out at what, at some of our board meetings through the whole thing, and we'll get toward the end, and you'll bring up this point that we all just kind of, we just look at each other and we're just beaming, because that's something only you will know, and that's why you're here. And I am so, I was really worried we weren't going to have someone from Westmore, and I'm so glad you stepped up. And when Ms. Salahodin said that you have like this very, very much, this maturity about you, I remember when you came to the board meeting, I knew who you were, because I know students at Westmore and FBLA, so I knew who you were, and I saw you sitting there, but the other trustees who were up here didn't know that you were the student from Westmore, and so when you introduced yourself, they were saying, she's a student, because you looked like a grown-up to them. So, but I, I'm so proud of you. I mean, I got to work with them on the Student Advisory Council, and we would just sit back and watch and just, um, learn, because you kept collaborated so well, you got to, to know each other so well, but you got things done. I mean, the food, that was you. You guys did that. And now our problem is the lines are too long, so...
That's a nice problem to have.
I know. But I just want to thank you, because also the strength of the women here, you are young women, and you make me very proud, so thank you very much.
They said, probably Cal said, I would just say, having been involved as a high school student, I'd never did the kind of things that you're all a part of here, and I'm very proud to see that you're modeling that, because we did start off one student trustee, and we have students across the district who are serving in various forms of leadership. This part is unique in that you have to deal with adults in these meetings after school at least once a week, or once every two weeks, and so that is not lost to any of us, but I think also, when you think about student government, you're interacting, you're interacting here with real government. And so when you think about the capacity you have to bridge, there are things that you want to bring back to school that might not always be exciting, might not always feel like it's interesting, but the fact that you are here paying attention says a lot, especially when you think about student government, the kind of things we're dealing with on, on high school campuses and the kind of issues that are real in our communities and the things that we see in the news. I'm very proud to say that, starting with one and now having five, we're doing things in our district and making changes that are making the news. And we know that, because we're in all of these, we're involved in all these issues at all of our sites in our community, so very proud of everything you're doing and looking forward to that continued effort wherever you go, those of you who are still here with us next year, of course, and those who move on to college in the community and we go, so good job, I'm very proud.
I don't have much more to add. Everything's been said, but thank you for all the input and contribution that you ladies have made. I think definitely been a great voice for all the students and trying to help us realize what needs to be improving, always, you know, with all the schools, and definitely wish you all the best of luck in the future, and we'll see you next year.
The, it's what jumps out at me is remembering back to the California School Board Association Conference in San Francisco, and the inherent joy you guys had running around the trade show floor, meeting with vendors, playing some of the games, but also connecting with our, who, what, with what would soon become our new food service provider. You know, the relationship you guys built there just, just by going up and talking to them.
They didn't talk to them.
Well, I know.
They grilled them.
They grilled them, actually, you're right. Absolutely. You know, and then the other thing is just being up here, you, some, some of you have sat through some fairly difficult board meetings, you know, some, some interesting public comment. You've, and more importantly, though, you guys have given voice to things that we actually are thinking about saying, but you guys said it before we could, and there's no reason for us to say it, because what you said is what needed to be said about programs, about curriculum, things that you're seeing that we have to adjust to and make. And so for that, most importantly, thank you, because you really have made a difference. This district is a better place today because of your participation and leadership this year, so thank you. Dr. Dory, do you have anything else you want to add?
I don't want to repeat, but there's something you said that I want to underscore. I think the question that we should all be asking is, is our district a better place today for all students, given your engagement this past year? And absolutely without a doubt, 110%, the answer is yes. And student voice matters, and I think we're going to take that to a whole new level next year because of the foundation you put in place this year, so thank you very much.
Yeah, I mean, with the student voice, and just really quickly, the survey, we will be able to use the survey for at least another two years.
Oh, yeah.
And to have a survey that has half of our students participating, you know, most of our surveys come back with like one or 200, and we're like, yay, 200 people responded. To have over 1,500 students respond to a survey, I mean, that's clear data that we can use in our decision-making process, because we want to make sure that we are doing the work of serving our students. So I, it's unheard of to have a response to a survey like that, and every place I go to, every district I talk to, when I talk about it, they're all like, really? So, I mean, that alone, what you've accomplished this year has just been unbelievable, so you should be extremely proud of yourselves. It was really great work.
Ms. Cardoza, would you come up, because we do have something to give you.
Can we take one more picture with all of them?
Yeah, one more group photo.
Let's just edit what we want. It's tight. I know. Totally. Oh, wait.
I believe in color, just to tweet all these pictures.
All right, moving on to item 11B, Jefferson High School Varsity Baseball Team. Congratulations to the Jefferson High School Varsity Baseball Team for being the 2019 PAL Late Division Champions again. Back-to-back titles, which is the first time in Jefferson High School history. So the team members, Joaquin Alvarez, Marco Andriano, Christopher Blondino, Gabriel Gonzalez, Chris Jordan, Jose, Adam Liu, Jason Lopez, Calvin Louie, Luke Marr, Romeo Ray Norag, Alan Oleta, David Rebollini, Adrian Rivas, Phil Seuss, and Michael Trejo, with coaches Michael Morla, Rob Roy, and Anthony Pickwit? Sorry if I screwed that up. And we've got, what else do we have here? Oh, okay. And the PL Coach of the Year, Michael Morla, back-to-back. Player of the Year, Calvin Louie. Picture of the Year, Luke Marr. First Team All Lead, Joaquin Alvarez. Second Team All Lead, Chris Jordan, Jose, and Marco Andriano. And honorable mention, Gabriel Gonzalez and David Rebollini. Well, guys, come on up, we'll take your group photo. And we've got certificates here for you, we'll give them to your coach.
One, two, three. You know you're being televised, but...
You can watch on YouTube later.
You can watch it on YouTube.
Now, we know you guys got studies and stuff, so don't feel like you need to stay tonight, it's all good. And Coach, did you want to add anything? Coach, you want to say anything? You can just shout from back there.
Yeah, can you?
Come on up. Actually, come on up.
There you go.
Yeah.
Thank you for the mic.
Can I sit down?
You understand, you can take your chair.
I feel like I'm being interviewed.
You can take your chair.
It's all good, it's all good.
Oh, man.
Just, just hold the whole thing.
I think I have a loud voice.
Yeah, there you go.
All right, first of all, I want to say thank you for recognizing this team. During the league meeting, excuse me, during the league meeting, when they nominated me for Coach of the Year, it wasn't because we won the league, it was because of how wonderful they thought our kids were.
Yeah.
You don't know, Cal High Sports did a little interview with us, because they were so happy when they recorded our game, on how happy these kids were, how passionate they were, and as a coach, I'm very proud. And I think what this team did was they represented not only our school, but this district.
Yes.
Okay, at the meeting, they, all they talked about was Jefferson High School, how proud where they were for these kids. Excuse me, I'm nervous.
You're doing great.
All right, so I just want to say thank you. This was a magical season. What these kids said at their interview was, a lot of these kids played baseball together since fourth grade.
Wow.
They played with or against each other. I even coached against them in Little League, so in high school, they came together, and if you know Daly City, it's, it's hard to get a baseball team. Everybody loves basketball, and so with this team, I hope it brings hope to bring back Little League in Daly City, and to have kids interested in playing baseball again.
Amen.
So, I want to thank this group, and they left a legacy, and hopefully as coaches we can keep it together, and as kids in Daly City, we can keep playing baseball. So thank you, team. Thank you, board. Thank you, parents. Thank you, everybody.
So I just, before you guys run out, I just want to say that, you know, the, the team reflects leadership, and so you've been a fantastic leader, that's why I don't mind cooking for you whenever you want me to come over here. I know, I know. So, thank you, guys, to you and all the coaches for everything you did, and then we all know that we can't have successful four teams without a strong parent community, so thank you to all the parents who support our athletic teams, and especially with the parents in our room and the parents who are outside of the room, so thank you for all you do. We know that school funding is one of the hard things, and one of the things I kind of consider peripheral is athletics, and we fund it as much as we can, but we wouldn't be able to field successful teams if the parents didn't step up and help out the way they do. So we are internally grateful, and we just want to communicate that to you all.
You've got some really active parents and grandparents.
Oh, wow.
They've got their folding chairs, and they're out there, you know, supporting the kids and barbecuing, and, you know, all sorts of stuff, and it is a family, it's just wonderful to watch.
There's no, every now and then I go, like, there's no games like Jeff games because of the, the support that comes through the community and the family that come out and cheer for the team. It's always so much fun to be a part of Jeff Sports, so thank you.
All right, now we're good. All right, we'll move on to item 12A, Board Report. We'll start at the far end of the table, Ms. Cardoza.
So last Saturday was our prom, so it was the night of thousand lights, which was really fun. It was so much fun seeing everybody dress up and wear and get their everything done. I still have the remaining of my nails, which I haven't broke it off yet, so I'm getting my money's worth. And Jeff and Thornton were both, Jeff and Thornton were both there, and it was amazing seeing everybody like come together and dance and do the same thing we do at rally sometime. It was just really fun and really enjoyable. Friday, a lot of the groups are preparing for the baccalaureate mass, which a lot of people are RSVPing for. Our senior finals are these three days, so I had, I had three of them today, so that was great. Yeah, that's fun. Our senior awards night, I'm so proud of everybody that were, was there and got so many awards. Honestly, our senior class is so smart and so talented, and seeing all of them get so many awards is so cool. And the baseball and varsity awards night, they had them, and I was proud of my friend, I don't know if she was here, but earlier, but Natalie, she was on the softball team. They had their awards night, and everybody was so proud of everyone, and I'm so excited that they all get their final say before we all have to graduate and leave, but we all have our like final, final goodbye and final remembrance, so it's pretty cool.
Okay, so for Westmore, it is last month of the school year, so Westmore's really, really busy. So at the start of the month, we had our last spring play, which was Radium Girls. It was pretty successful, the last play for the seniors, so some people got emotional. We also had IFD a few weeks ago. It was a great way for clubs to fundraise and for us to learn about other cultures as well. We had Spirit Week and Last Rally, so it was really fun, especially for the seniors, because it was our last one, so everyone showed up in college gear, or our class color was red for this one. FBLA State Conference, so it took place over prom weekend, so unfortunately, some of the seniors couldn't make it, but from what I heard, a lot of people placed and qualified for nationals, so that's really cool. We had AP testing for the last two weeks, so that was really brutal for people to, taking multiple APs, but thankfully, we got through them.
How many did you take?
Five. Oh, we also had senior awards night, and we celebrated a lot of exceptional seniors, and it was really fun seeing a lot of my friends get awards and get scholarships and stuff like that. Oh, yeah, we had a garden dedicated to Mr. Delbonne. He's the advisor for green hats, so it was really like cool to see a lot of like the past admin come and say a few words about him. I know Mr. Morosi was there, and he told like a really like interesting story, so that was pretty cool. Oh, fashion design classes put on their second annual fashion show, so all of the students from Ms. Reeves' three classes, they wore one of the pieces they created during the school year, and then they kind of like modeled it on our stage or on our theater. Our Badminton team did well, we had four people advancing to NCS, NorCal, it was, it's past CCS, yeah, so it's pretty cool. Oh, for the past week, our students have been working on their Red for Ed campaigns, which are student-led, so we're going to have a program tomorrow during lunch, and we have two people going to Sacramento to represent Westmore. Our senior picnic is this Friday, and PTA is hosting a lunch for the seniors, and senior checkout has been happening throughout this week. So I think the teachers are signing the seniors out, like on a daily basis, so that there's no long lines on Friday, and seniors can have like an easy checkout. Okay, so for our last month of school at Oceana, we also had the last two weeks of AP testing, and I think it went good for most people, especially since they were paid for, so like it was equal for everyone to take them. We had our last rally, which was like Four Seasons themed, and the seniors, we celebrated them as spring, because they're having their new beginning of going to college, or whatever their plans are. And we recognized a lot of the teachers and staff that were leaving at the rally, so we had, the rally committee made posters for them and gave them like a bouquet of flowers and like recognized them for all of the work they put in. We had our prom last Saturday as well, it was at Fort Mason, and a lot of, it was like a really good turnout, a lot of people said a lot of nice things about it. It was really different from our regular proms, because we had food trucks instead of like vendor food, and we had table games for when there was like a lot of downtime between like the dancing and dinner. We had a free photo booth that had like an actual like flip book you can make too, out of your pictures, and we had a teapumps table, so people could get like a small cup of boba.
Of course.
Yeah, it was really cool. And then for juniors, we started picking our senior X topics for next year, and we started to pick our mentors for next year, and we're hopefully going to figure out who our mentors are this week. And we've also done things for Red for Ed. We had a workday today for making posters and buttons for the people who are going tomorrow. I'm not sure how many are going, but I know like at least like a bus full from our school.
Why do you, your students are going?
With Ms. David, so that's exciting. I'm going to try to go, but I don't know if I'll make it. And we also have our senior awards night tomorrow and senior checkout on Friday. Okay. A lot of things in common. Our Badminton team did well in PLs and CCS. Me and my partner and one singles player made it to the third day of PLs, and then he's continuing on to CCS. We've also had AP testing. Our prom is on May 11. Our prom is on May 11th at the Regency Ballroom in the city and the theme was Black and Gold Gala. We had tacos and unlimited ice cream sandwiches. Our senior award night was on the 16th. I think I saw you there. Yeah. And we have a lot of students with high honors and, like, just valedictorians, there's four of them and there's three salutatorians. So, yeah, it's going to be a long graduation. The spring choir concert is tomorrow and on Thursday is the spring band concert. Seniors also check out on Thursday. We're not doing the, like, ahead-of-time thing, so it's going to be a long line, especially because, like, one of our counselors is out on maternity leave, so, yeah. We're bringing Red for Ed tomorrow and graduation practice is Friday and Tuesday. Finals for junior sophomores and freshmen start on Tuesday and graduations on Wednesday, the 29th, at 2:30.
God, your reports are so good. I'm just bored. So, since our last board meeting, we've done a lot of stuff together. I spent a lot of time at Jefferson because I, I did the, for Teacher and Staff Appreciation Week, I did the dessert bar one day. So, the night before, I was dipping strawberries and chocolate while I was watching the Warriors game. And I also attended the BSU Senior Night, the EL Awards. There were 28 students who were reclassified. That was outstanding. It was great to spend time with families. And we also went to the Kent Awards where Mission Fusion performed and wowed everyone. And Grizzlies Go Green won a Kent Award. And I was especially proud that our president of the San Mateo School Awards Association, Kalima Salahudeen, was emceeing and being completely real with everyone. Because they need to hear it, really. They really do. We need to see more representation of people who look like us, really.
I did say that.
Yeah. And we had a great LCAP and budget study session, always very enjoyable, very productive and make me feel smart when you're, you're doing your presentation. Because it's, it's easy to follow, I think. And I did go to the senior awards night at Jeff and it was so great to see you up there. And there are a lot of Jeff alumni who were actually presenting awards and some of them had presented awards for decades to their, to other Jeff students. And last night, I went to the Jefferson Council General Meeting and Dinner, end of the year dinner, because they gave me an honorary service award for continuing service and I was very touched because I've done so much in this community. Thank you.
Don't have a lot to report for this board report, but seeing students get through finals and get ready for finals, actually, and AP tests and just kind of after the year, it's been kind of, it's been going by fast. So, I'm enjoying the last of it and looking forward to the rest before we get on through the rest of 2019. It's going to be a very fast year, I feel like, so proud of our accomplishments.
I pretty much went to most of the events that Rosie went to, so I'm not going to repeat everything, but I do, again, want to congratulate, I was, I did attend the JCP TA Awards Dinner last night and want to congratulate Rosie again for receiving her continued service award and thank you for all you do for the community. And I'm sure everybody here has been touched by all the things that you have done for all the students and the family here, you know, for all these years. So, thank you again, Rosie.
Yep, ditto. I was glad the kid awards went well. On my shoulders as a president this year, so I'm glad that it went well. I was, I always hate to ask extra of students, I mean, students, teachers, but I was so happy that Ms. Manzal agreed to have Mission Fusion come out and perform because we had never had, JUHSD had never had a school performance at the Kent Awards before. And they turned it out. They were phenomenal and I was really happy with, with the truncated presentation that they showed from the Mission Fusion, which is a couple of hours long, so they did a really great job. And again, very proud of the Grizzlies Go Green program and when they're winning their honor. I also went to Delegate Assembly, which was this past weekend and represented for this region at the statewide CSBA Delegate Meeting. And then tomorrow, I am going to go to Sacramento for the Red for Ed Rally. This is the first time that I've seen, not just as a school board member, but just in my, all of my advocacy work for education, that the three organizations, California School Board Association, CFT and CTA are holding a rally together. So, for me, it's, like, about time that we started working together in order to get California to wake up because we cannot continue this way. We shouldn't have to decide who doesn't get fed every time we're doing a budget. We're talking about our children. We should be able to fund everything in a way that's equitable and adequate for all of our children in one of the richest places, not in the nation, but on earth, on earth. It is unbelievable that we cannot find the money for the next generation of leaders when this state was built on public education. We have the successful prosperous areas of this state because we had a strong public education, not just K-12, but to college. Because when my mom talks about how much she paid to go to a UC, I don't want to hear it when I'm paying for what I'm, you know, paying right now for. So, for me, it's, like, we do all these things to make sure that our kids can go to college, but that doesn't mean anything if you can't afford to go there, having done the work. We should not have to tell a child that they've done through all of these things and they can't afford to move on. And I don't want to have teachers having to worry about where they're going to stay, how they're going to pay the rent. Should they have children so that they can do the thing that they love to do every single day? Or have staff members have to have two or three or four jobs because what we pay our staff, you can't even afford to pay rent and live. So, I'm hoping that folks, it's, that I'm happy that folks are wearing red tomorrow and I'm happy that folks are going to the rally, but I'm also having a letter-writing campaign. And let me tell you, when we talk to the people who are in control of the money, our, our state senators and our state assembly members, they don't care enough. When I tell them, we don't have enough mental health services or we don't have enough counselors, they say, well, you guys have the money, figure it out. And that is not the response that I want from my elected leaders. But the problem is, they can do whatever they want to education and there is no political repercussions at all. And so, I'm hoping that this is the beginning of a movement to get people to care. I don't know why we haven't burned everything down already. And so, a letter goes such a long way that it's not just school board members complaining about this to our state legislators, that it's also they're hearing from our teachers, that they're hearing from our students, that they're hearing from our parents about what it's like to go through California's public education system in the way that it's funded. It doesn't take that long to write a letter. I just thought about this, like, hopefully, Kenneth, I'll send it to you, we can throw it up on the website, the link to the website to the campaign. It takes a few minutes, it's really quick. All you have to do is plug in your address, it'll automatically pull up who your assigned legislators are and you just really, if you could just quickly tell them, this is how it is impacting you, so that when I go and advocate on your behalf, all those letters are behind me of all these people who are voting. So, if you can write a letter, if you can share it yourself, it goes a long way and I'm just going to get off the soapbox.
Can't really follow that, but I completely agree and I think, it's interesting, I was at Senator Jerry Hill's Education Roundtable on Friday afternoon and he got an earful from, from several of, of the districts in his, in his Senate district, even, even some of the South Bay districts, which, you know, were sharing some issues of, of the struggles that they're, that they're experiencing. So, it was, it was good. The housing issue came up again and, and it was, you know, it was interesting to hear from the other districts about their struggles with, with that and, you know, I'm just grateful that we are as far along as we are with our project and continuing to move forward. I attended many of the same events that, that most of you did, whether it was BSU, Kent Awards, you know, and one of the more interesting ones I attended actually was at my own alma mater on Sunday, was their Alumni Day. And for those who don't know, I, I went, was a private school kid, Licorant High School in San Francisco. And what was interesting about the day, I know, I know, I'm that guy, I'm that guy. I know, I know.
I'm sorry.
It's quite okay. But it, it was interesting to go in there actually with a diff, with this perspective as a school board member, actually, because they recently had a remodel of their, of their main building. And to wa, be able to tour and walk around the, the school and just sort of see some of the stuff that they have up on the wall to encourage students in, in terms of mindset. And it took some photos of some of the things they said in some of the classrooms, you know, the way that they were, it was some of the math classrooms that were open and the things about math is communication and, and it's okay to make mistakes and it's about the process. And it was really encouraging to see that, you know, and to go into the cafeteria and see a bulletin board with, with, with all of their college information and college counseling information, so it's in a central location in a high-traffic student location, so it's embedded in, in their thought process. And, and it got me just thinking about things that we could do to take, to take that, those types of ideas and incorporate it into our schools, you know. And, and so, it was really fun to be able to walk around, not knowing anybody who was there because none of my classmates were there. And so, I was just sort of walking around on my own, just sort of looking and observing at the things that, that they do that make it work in that particular context. But certainly happy to be able to come back and, and know that this is, that what we're doing here with the 4,000-plus students here is just so, so amazing, the, the work that we're doing. And, and the recognition that we are receiving for so much of what we're doing, especially with what we've talked about previously with what our student trustees have done, that it's a model program, quite frankly, so, really great.
So, I don't want to, the thing about going last is you all talk about things I want to talk about. So, I'll get back on the soapbox. And I'm just, never underestimate the Jefferson Union High School staff because tomorrow, we have 75? There's 75 going to Sacramento tomorrow, students, both certificated and classified staff management, board members, and that's what it's going to take in the state. It just can't be the burden of one group in California is going to take all of us together, so I'm really proud of that. And for those people who can't go tomorrow, and I should just, hats off to Monica. So, let's just call it, like, is it, this, this event was planned last minute and Monica was able to rally the troops. She didn't know the answers to most of their questions right away and they were patient and slowly a plan evolved and so, thank you, Monica, for organizing all that. And we, we worked with the ASB directors and of course, this is a real busy time of year to expect students to be out of class, right? You heard from the seniors, they're taking their finals this week and everyone else is taking them next week and there's graduation. And yet, the ASB directors rose to the occasion, you heard he should, they have to have field trip forms and all that kind of stuff taken care of, so. And even back at the school sites, there's at least two schools have organized a lunch rally, extended lunch rallies. Westmore is one of them. So, there's stuff happening, no matter who you are, there's a way to get involved. And, and I, I just really connected with something Kalima said earlier. You know, every day you read the paper or read online, your society, our society has so many challenges to resolve. And when I see who our students are, I'm comforted in knowing that someday I can pass the torch on and they're going to take care of us. And I have no doubt that our students will be part of that call.
And then really quickly, I forgot. This week is our Classified Staff Appreciation Week and so, I just want to shout out to all of our classified staff in JUHSD because they are a lot of times not recognized for the tons and tons of work they do expressly supporting everybody else in the district. So, just appreciation to all the classified staff in the, in the district.
Great, okay. All right. I believe Thornton High School's in the house for their ASB student presentation, so come on up, Thornton.
Good evening, folks. So, before I turn it over to Javi, I just wanted to take the opportunity to thank you all for the time to share student activities. And I also want to give a shout out to the Thornton teachers and staff that are here. I also want to give a shout out for Javi's support group, Mr. McIntyre, Angel. And then I'm going to turn it over to Javi. Javi is one of, one of our great rock stars and an example of what Thornton is striving to become, somebody who has a powerful voice, lots of goals and dreams in her life. And today, she's going to share with us the activities that we have done, some things that are looming in the future, and then her own perspective on her Thornton experience.
Javi, we're fine. It's, you don't have to worry about us. You got this.
Friendly, they're all friendly.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so I'm a junior at Thornton High School. I came to Thornton High School my sophomore year in the CEOP program and then I transferred into Thornton. Personally, Thornton, at first, I didn't know how I felt about it because I had never gone to, like, I felt like the word continuation school was always so weighed upon heavily as, like, such a bad place to go. But once I got there, I felt like I earned a second family, including friends, staff, and always having a hand or, a hand or a person to guide me through it, so. On about the activities that we have at Thornton High School. We did two annual barbecues, one my dad barbecue that. Our spirit days are always fun. We even get competitive with credit earning and homerooms. Not too long ago, I think a few months ago, we went to Glide Memorial in San Francisco, right off of Powell Street, and we fed the homeless from, I think, like, nine to, like, two, maybe. We had our pie eating contest, which was fun. We also had Taco Day and a taco eating contest. We got sweatshirts that we designed. And our spring barbecue, it got postponed because of rain, but we had soup instead and it was fun and then we ended up having a barbecue. We had a dodgeball game, including students and staff, which was really fun. And, yeah, I feel like at Thornton, personally, I, I have, I feel like I have a say in my community more based on, like, if something's going on at our school, everyone's involved. Or if I need help with something, I could ask any teacher, even if I don't have their class and they'll be able to help. We have after-school tutoring. I attended once, just to help before, like, a math test. We have on-campus jobs that we could, like, apply for. If your friend's at a job, you could always go to them and ask, like, hey, are you guys hiring? We always have posters around our school about, like, spirit days or activities that are going on throughout the week. We have the Fly, I graduated from the Fly program this year, their law program. I started off at Each One Reach One and kind of transferred over. I also graduated from Sex Ed Squad this, like, last week. And our Kaiser Permanente program is going on right now, if people aren't going to the Alcatraz trip tomorrow. And we have educational theater program that I know my friend Brianna participates in. Why is all this important? I feel like continuation schools are always targeted as such a bad place and they don't have any extracurriculars, so you kind of lose out on everything that goes on in high school, but that's most definitely 100% wrong. I feel like I get more of a one-on-one high school experience, being in a smaller community, based on, like, on everyone, like, I have a class with at least each person in our school, at least once, so it's, like, a support, it's more of a support system within, like, students and staff. I know, I could tell you every one of the teachers that goes, that works at our school, every person in the office. And, yeah, so I feel like it's important because a lot of kids, if they don't get it at home, they get it at school. I think that's it. Do you guys have any questions?
Of course.
Anybody want to start or do you want to start?
It's always really nice seeing all the ASB, like, all the presentations from other schools because it gives you, like, insight into how, like, your school is better and, no. How your school is different from other schools and how our schools are different from other schools in the district and how we can see that, like, maybe Oceana had something that Westmore didn't have. had something that Westmore didn't have or something. And it inspires all of us to change something outside of our own schools. And seeing this shows like, shows that like, how you talked about kind of like the narrative that other people cast on your school and other schools in our district is not even true at all. And like we all just, we're all just out here and trying to get things done and do, make a difference in our own communities. And seeing how you guys are doing it from this presentation is just really, really great and inspiring. And I hope you guys can continue it through next year as well.
So personally, for me, it was really interesting to see your presentation, just because I, like I don't know anyone who's ever gone to Thornton. So I don't really know what it's like. But seeing your presentation gave me like a new perspective on like the school and what it's like to go there. So regarding the presentation itself, I thought it was really cool that you had a lot, a lot of activities to bring the school together. Like you mentioned the taco eating contest and the barbecues. I thought that was really like fun and cool and like a great way to get to know people. I also like hearing you talk about the on-campus jobs because I feel like that's a good way for students to get resources. And like if they need help like financially, that's like a good way to like, like get help from the school and not have to go out and like search around.
I also didn't know a lot about Thornton. So thank you for coming here and presenting to us. I also go to a really small school. So I know like what that small community is like with your barbecues and like all the things you have to bring each other together. And I thought that was really nice to hear. So thank you.
Were you nervous at all? Because I couldn't tell. You are such a great public speaker. You need to keep doing that. It's so heartfelt and, I mean, you're just a great public speaker. And I, I don't know, do any of your teachers have done that with you in class where you've had to speak in front of the class? But this is a great presentation. I, anytime I'm at Thornton, it's, it does feel like family. I mean, and, and whenever I hear the students talk, they always say the same thing that, you know, they're getting something there that they haven't had anywhere else. So it's a special place. I'm glad, maybe you'll, you'll be presenting to us again next year.
Good presentation. And, you know, not to repeat things that, you know, we're saying tonight or that we always say, but Thornton is always impressive, not just because it's a continuation school and has to defeat stereotypes or anything, like it's a good high school. And I know when I was there, I learned a lot by working there and seeing things that teachers did, that students did, staff all around. And it's a combination of all our schools. And so what you bring to the table here is very enlightening, I think, too. Trustee Benitez is bringing here as a student trustee echoed that a lot. So hopefully can see, continue seeing this leadership and inspiration. And yeah, you did fine. Like, yeah, it's okay to be nervous though, keeps you on toes, you know, but, but you did do good. And I think with all the support that you have at Thornton, that, proud to see these things keep growing and developing. So keep the good work.
Great presentation, Javi. I see great potential in you. I hear lots of great things from Dr. Mariko and all your teachers here. And thank you to all the staff and principal, also Dr. Mariko, for giving Javi, like, being the example to change their mindset in the community, to know that Thornton is a great school, it's a small community, and that we're going to have great outcomes and student success following their future. So, but keep up the good work. And I hope to see you again here at the next school year.
Yeah, so Thornton is, is a good high school. And I think maybe we need to, in our district and, and our administration, how we speak about Thornton. And while I know it's classified as a continuation school, we don't need to use that terminology when we're talking about it. That is a high school, just like any other high school. And that it's, Thornton is serving its students just like any other high school. And there is multiple pathways to success. Everybody doesn't have to walk the same path and they shouldn't. Because that's what makes the world the better, the better place that it is, that we all have different experiences. And it's really dependent on how we accept people who come to us in different ways. So I think maybe we should think about that because I'm tired of talking about Thornton as this Thornton, I mean Thornton is what it is and we just need to move on. The other thing is, I'm always going to plug in, is that I, when I was going in order and then Erica walked in and threw me off a little bit, and I didn't speak about Valeria Benitez, who was one of our student trustees from Thornton. And she was a phenomenal voice, phenomenal. I could always count on Valeria to say the thing that needed to be said, but no one wanted to say it. She was a wonderful representation, representation for Thornton. And I'm hoping to get representation from Thornton again. And the reason why I'm saying this is because I think you're awesome and, you know. Put your name right there. So if you, and I know there's time commitment in the streets and we'd be willing to work with you and do whatever we need to do. But if you ever wanted to elevate a little bit and represent your school up on this dais, I would love to have you here. Okay. And again, to the Thornton staff, I mean, I always love you guys and how you are such a family and you always come together and you always represent for the school. So when we're talking about it's a high school like everybody else, Thornton has the most school spirit of any school I've ever seen in this district. And, you know, there's been so many times when, like I'm feeling low and something's happening and then Thornton, it's always like Thornton comes around the corner and I'm like, okay, here we go. So, thank you guys again for all of your dedication, especially taking time out to be here tonight and supporting your students. So it's wonderful. Thank you.
You stole that line from me.
Sorry.
I always love seeing the love from the Thornton staff whenever Thornton students are presenting and phenomenal job, really. What I really want to know is how, what kind of pie at the pie eating contest? Yeah, how's it, how's it set up? Seriously, I was actually trying to cheer. I see it up there. I want to know.
I think it was set up by slice. And it's like when someone finished one, you just slide it to the side and keep it coming.
All right, well, the winner ate how many slices?
Oh my God.
Okay.
Yeah, I know.
Do you know? When I see that, I just started, no, that's all.
It's because you lost thirty-one pounds.
Living vicariously through this.
No, phenomenal.
Pie of your choice.
Phenomenal job. And also, you know, just really proud of you for just, with all the stuff that you guys have done this year, you know, and I think, you know, what did you think about feeding the homeless out, out in San Francisco?
Well, like usually, like people have such a thing where it's like homeless people are bad people or it's always because of drugs or it's always because of alcohol abuse. But it was more of like people's situations just change. And sometimes ends don't meet. So I felt like once getting my hand out into the community to reach that handout and be like, you do have a support system and there's someone here for you and there's places people can go. And there's resources and being able to provide one of those resources meant a lot.
Wow, well said.
That's why you really should be up here too. So, so another plug for it. So fantastic job. Dr. Delora, do you have anything else you wanted to add?
Well, ditto everything everyone else said. Javi, good job, really. And I think you're an example of how your Thornton family brought you in just, just where you were and brought you where they needed to bring you. So you're a really good example of that. So I see that every time I come onto campus. It, it doesn't matter whether you're C in the attendance office, or if you're Mama Liz, or if you're Carla, or if you're a teacher, everyone is there to support you. You've got a big support system. And I want to recognize Mr. Rodriguez. You know, teaching is a full-time job plus, 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 plus. So when we have teachers who stand up and take these additional assignments, they're gifts. So thank you, Mr. Rodriguez.
Well, thank you again for all, for your presentation tonight. So, your excuse, thank you. Okay, item thirteen, consent. Dr. Delora, was there a change on consent?
Yes. There, Candace is going to tell us what that change is. There was a mistake made on, on the HR portion.
Correct. The, the personnel agenda from Human Resources, there was a person that was on the agenda and should not have been. So they are removed from there. So the revised agenda is on the, is on there.
Okay. Okay. All right. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda with the change as delineated by Ms. Bell?
Come on.
Fallows in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, very good. Item fourteen, public comment. Do we have any blue cards this evening, Ms. Tahada?
I have one blue card. Monica Casey. I just wanted to thank the members of the board and the administration and all of the staff of Jefferson Union High School District for coming together for Red for Ed for tomorrow. So as a reminder to everyone, please wear red. We're trying to fund our education at an adequate amount. You know, depending on what, what statistics you look at, you know, we're down in the forties, how much money we spend on our students compared to other states. We're the fifth largest economy in the world. That shouldn't happen. In addition to that, we need to talk to our representatives about the fact that in our school district, we're in a very wealthy county and yet we don't get the same amount as other, other districts in our county. So that would be another little thing to talk about if you do a letter writing. I did send out the, the letter writing to, to the staff. So hopefully they will share that with their students. So if you want to ask your, your teachers and staff about that, that'd be great. But I just wanted to thank everyone for participating and helping get this together. I couldn't have done it without everyone trying to figure something out. So that's all I wanted to say. Thank you so much.
All right, moving on to discussion items. Fifteen A, Education Services, fifteen A1, specifically the 2019-2020 School Plan for Student Achievement Presentation. Ms. Baca, with all the principals sitting in the back row like they'd often do.
Good evening, President Lee. Good evening, members of the board. I would like to call our esteemed principals up here. A couple of chairs.
Let me get my seating chart out. They are in A, B, C order. Look at that.
Nice.
Well done.
I know, this never happens.
No, they're not.
I know, why do we get them all in here? You know I'm going to take a picture, right? With the nice, I love it. One, two, three. Take me an hour to do it.
Exhausted in May, look. So our lovely principals, very hardworking, will be presenting tonight. And this is actually their second SIPSA of the year. I, they hated me for asking them. But what has hap, what is going to happen is that it's finally going to align with our LCAP cycle. So their plans will be approved before even the school year starts. And so that is the reason why we are doing this second time in a row. And I have asked them to present their SIPSA's tonight. Okay? So they will be presenting with, presenting you with three slides. Each school site, less than five minutes.
Less than, less than five minutes.
Concise. So please hold your questions and comments at the end and we can proceed to that. Okay? So again, the objective for tonight is to present and highlight each high school's School Plan for Student Achievement. They will all cover their measurable outcomes or their metrics, their goals and strategies, and their expenditures for tonight. And the SIPSA is a strategic plan that maximizes resources available to the school while minimizing duplication of effort with the ultimate goal of increasing student achievement. So we have our district plan, which is the LCAP, and their school plan is the SIPSA. And our goal is to align both documents. So without further ado, we'll start with Mr. Bashir's.
Thank you, Ms. Baca. Thank you, Lord. Actually, we really appreciate it. None of us were angry with Ms. Baca for coming up with this. In fact, I think we'll all probably really appreciate it when the ball rolls around and the ball is, is going. So we'll start first with the other performance indicators and the identified needs. These are metrics we're all very familiar with. We're going to be looking at CASP data, PSAT, SAT data. Now that that's something that, that, I mean, that's just as, as important and as measurable now as CASP. And since we have so many students taking it. Our A to G completion rate, so we're going to be looking, of course, at the percentage of ninth graders who successfully completed four classes. We're always very concerned, you know, are they getting off to that strong start? What happens, you know, when they fall behind their ninth grade year? They're playing catch-up from that point on. Also, you know, for us, it's very important to be following, you know, our EL students. I remember when, when I moved to Terranova, that, that year, Jefferson sent more EL students to a four-year college than any other public school on the peninsula. And that's something that I want us to be able to, to always come back to and always like, you know, strive as a goal. Also, our percentage of sped students, you know, matriculating to college as well. Having done away with, with entrance requirements for AP, we want to, you know, look at our AP enrollment. And for those of you who came to our EL night the other night, yes, reclassification rate is also very important to us. Other data which affects performance, obviously, you know, includes attendance and suspension. And so we need to be looking at those. So our planned goals, you know, as a district, we're all moving towards professional learning communities. The, the principal before me, Jason Brockmeyer, had done a lot of work in that area. So it was something that, that I think was kind of a natural fit for Jefferson. There's still a lot of work to be done. Next year, we'll be looking at defining essential standards, developing common assessments, and then really how do we make sense of all of that data? And then how do we put that back into use in the classroom? Also, and this is tied with, with the suspension data that I mentioned earlier, we need to, we need to spend a lot more time looking into sort of practice and putting with our students in the classroom. We don't want them at home, we don't want them wandering the streets. This one, Ed, I got, I got to give Keisha credit for this, particularly the, the acronym that goes along with, we want, we want all of our kids to have a gym membership. That is Grizzly Youth Mentors. It's based upon a program that our, our former vice principal, Letty Gonzalez, started, which was the Cub Club. And, and it builds on that, but it has a lot of, a lot of new features to it. We're really excited about that. But it's essentially, it's going to be, you know, pairing some of our at-risk students with, with adult mentors that will be able to work with them. And we'll get to this towards the end. I'm not going to spend too much time talking about it now, but we are introducing Grizzly Flex Time, which is a tutorial period. And it's something that we're very excited about. And then, of course, we want to continue working with, this year we have a, a student and a staff climate committee. And we want to continue working with them, putting their ideas into, implementing their ideas and putting them into practice. So here are some of our budgeted expenditures, because none of this stuff is for free. The, the collaboration time, I went to the, to the school site council and asked for, for sixteen grand and, and explained how we wanted to use it. And they came back and said, that's nice, Mr. B, let's go with the twenty. Also, you know, looking at, you know, again, we need to do a fund of homework center, the, the gym membership is, it's never cheap. So that's seventeen grand there. The 3D printer, we have 3D printers at Jefferson, but currently those are used by our robotics and engineering. What we want to do is we're using, you know, some parcel tax funds. We want to put a 3D printer in the library that students and staff can access. Also, you know, twenty grand for, for professional development. And then, you know, following up, building on the district's initiative with constructing meaning. We've got eight, eight thousand set aside for constructing meaning lessons.
Thank you. Ms. Holland from Oceana High School.
So we looked at a lot of the same data points. And really, honestly, the beginning of it was our WASC dive. And we, I think we believe very strongly in aligning things. And so when we looked at the WASC data, when I first got there, it suggested a trajectory for six years. And so that became the core of our six-year plan. And of course, that is based on these kinds of indicators. But also, quite a lot of survey indicators. We've, there's so much. We're always analyzing the program. So we analyze, for instance, what happens to transfer students, especially when do they come in? And what happens when they're coming in? Is it different for a ninth grader coming in second semester versus, say, you know, certainly a latter certainly a latter semester or a twelfth grader, for instance? And what can we do about that? We looked at language surveys, how many families needed translation services for back-to-school night and things like that. So beyond the sort of typical stuff, our students and our staff and our academic council, which is all a combination of that, is looking at a lot of different indicators, and some of them very particular to Oceana. So we spend the lion's share of our money every year on collaboration, because that's what we do. We are working towards grade-level collaboration with our house structure, so we're looking at Kidbits, which is students who are not being so successful. What can we do to support those students really early on in the ninth and tenth grade? We're looking at collaboration around scaffolds, so if there's a group working this summer, for instance, on creating some scaffolds for our students with special needs, our students that are on the 504 plan, and those students who are not achieving where we would expect, who are not on either of those things, so that we are supporting them before it becomes a problem. So there is a lot of scaffolding work. We're doing a lot of support throughout the year, like we do math advisory, for instance, but in order to do those kinds of things, we have to constantly collaborate and figure out what is it that is the problem, and then how do we address the problem? And that all comes into the collaboration work. Co-teaching and inclusion, we're working together when our students are included through the certificate program or through any other of our special education programs. How are we supporting their needs so that they can be success- so that they can successfully access the general ed curriculum? And sometimes that's a student-by-student basis. Sometimes we're looking at how do they get to the exhibition support that they need in order to be successful and still do what other students are doing who maybe don't have special needs? And then we are especially aggressively looking at, aggressive is a weird word to use for mindfulness, but our two, our two real leaders are leaving our school who have been instrumental in our mindfulness practice, and so we are often figuring out, like, when key faculty members leave, how do we keep the continuity? So we're looking into some mindfulness training for staff so that we can keep, because the students indicate that that's very helpful to them in terms of their social-emotional wellbeing. So as I said, the lion's share goes into collaboration, and that's because we hit the collaboration angle on so many different fronts. And senior exhibition support, which I didn't mention earlier, we are having teachers work after school and on Saturdays with students who are having some particular difficulty, so that they're scaffolded to success all the way along the process, so that they don't hit the end and go, "Whoops, there we go," but we actually are making sure that they're buoyed up throughout the process. We have a career day to help the students be exposed. In a small school, there's not so many opportunities for career education, and so besides our community service, we expose them to lots of different kinds of careers.
Ms. Gary, Terranova High School.
So you'll see a pattern, very similar, performance indicators, identify needs. Similar to Oceana, we just completed our WASC report. So our WASC self-study was, we feel, a very honest reflection of our students' needs, so it was natural just to align our SIPSA to our WASC goals. And these were the identify needs for Terranova. Our CASP data has been stagnant over the past three years, which is a stark contrast with the PSAT and SAT scores for Terranova, which is at the top end of the district and has for the past several years. Attendance, chronic absenteeism with the number of students who are marked excused by parents at Terranova is an identify need and something we want to work closely with the district office on. Office referral and suspension, just like Mr. Bashir said, wanting to incorporate more restorative practice in the PBIS, which is Positive Behavioral Interventions and Strategies. And for the college and career readiness, A through G completion rates in our AP enrollment as well. So these are our three goals, like I said, aligned to our WASC and very nicely aligned with the LCAP, looking to increase student achievement in English, Language, Arts, and Math. Goal number two, focusing on school climate, strengthening and implementing school-wide systems to increase student engagement, support positive student behavior, and improve student attendance. Well, number three focuses on college and career readiness by increasing A through G rates, expanding opportunities for AP classes, dual enrollment, and CTE pathway completions. So how, you seem to have a little bit of everything up there. One opportunity that we're gonna do is offer increased collaboration opportunities for staff members, and that will also help with our support for implementing the PLC framework. It is a low number right now. There'll be more opportunities for staff if they, in departments, if they wish to. Every department was tasked with creating a plan that focused on essential skills, common assessments, and data analysis. So there's increased opportunities for them to work on that plan. We're gonna continue with extending the hours of our library so that students at Terranova have increased access to technology and resources, especially considering the lack of transportation opportunities in Pacifica, and continue extending the hours of our college and career center, which was a huge boost to students and their access to college this year. Our work with climate and positive behavior will take place through our participation in a PBIS network with San Mateo County. We did that this year, where we sent a team of Terranova staff members to be trained, and that work will continue next year. We'll receive personalized coaching, and we're gonna finalize the development of our plan and start working on implementing that throughout campus. More work on school climate will come with Link Crew. We're gonna be starting our second year of Link Crew, so funds to continue on with that development. And work with Circle Up, which has been phenomenal for Terranova in improving our staff-community relationships. Talking about a school that was impacted by years of turnover and just having a little TLC on that this year made a huge difference. So we're gonna bring that momentum to student-staff relationships next year and then partner with our student climate committee and staff climate committee on areas of need.
Dr. Morenko, Thornton High School.
So in terms of the performance indicators, there's a number of them. A school like Thornton, there's lots of training and coaching and selling on the value of the importance of CASP. So to rely on ELA and math proficiency for all students is important, but we need to use multiple measures to really understand learning from the students. So that attendance is another. That seems to be our largest barrier, which is a symptom and not necessarily the root cause. Looking at students to maintain being on track and meeting on track for us is students earning twenty credits per quarter, or approximately two credits per week. And then the results from quarterly diagnostics to evaluate learning levels and fill in gaps in learning. So what we're attempting to shift to is rather than just focusing on credits, is focusing on learning, and then a byproduct of the learning are the credits. So in terms of planned goals, continuing with timely attendance and analysis, identifying the root causes to determine the targeted interventions so that we can increase our attendance rates to eighty percent and above. What we're finding is when our students are attending school eighty percent and above, which still is at a level of chronic absenteeism, they are more likely to stay on track and earn the credits that they should be on a quarterly basis, which, for many of our students, gives them the opportunity to graduate when they expect, and for many of them, three, six months sooner than they had thought. Frequent assessment of student performance to inform instruction and student engagement. We want to be able to do more timely assessment so that we can adjust the learning, so that the learning can be more engaging and students can have more buy-in. Again, with the remaining, with our sites, continuing to work with Circle Up, as we have worked together to build relationships, not just among staff, but performing, having certain strategies in classrooms, now really taking that next step to confront and explore implicit bias to increase student achievement. We want to expand methods of communications with families to improve engagement, so that not only do we have the same level of communication we have with English, but we also look at that same level of equity in Spanish and Tagalog. And then again, the transition from a culture of credit recovery to a learning community focused on college and career readiness. In terms of budget expenditures, when I talked earlier about attendance and chronic absenteeism, that is the most significant barrier we have, but to address the symptom is not necessarily problem-solving as best we can. So in order for us to really address the root causes, we wanted to really bring someone on campus that really specializes in how to assess, how to provide targeted interventions, and how to problem-solve, and that's when, last year, we were able to fund, with the help of the district office, a school social worker. So we're gonna continue with that position for the next, for the coming school year, and that position has led to us having more interventions based on data, as well as the opportunity to increase our family engagement and the expansion of services, and now embarking on work-study and increasing internships. You heard from Javi about the jobs on campus. That is all the work from our school social worker. Continue the training on implicit bias and restorative practices with Circle Up, and then support to strengthen the PLC framework to facilitate improvement in student achievement. And just one other thing I wanted to add, is really our focus, too, is really being systemic, being intentional, and being strategic on a multi-tiered systems of support, so having a really strong tier-one foundation of what we do, on what good initial first teaching and learning is, and then when we have students that are missing a mark or we are missing a mark on these learning targets, how we can provide target supports at a tier-two and a tier-three level.
Westmore High School, Ms. Strickland.
Thank you, and good evening, board. So our academic indicators, obviously related so much to some of the other school sites in Jefferson Union High School District, is the CASP data, that's something definitely that our leadership team and our staff is looking at. We spent the year at some of our collaboration meetings, just kind of looking at it and trying to make meaning of it. We're also looking at our A through G completion rate. Our baseline that we're using is in 2018. Our graduating class was at a forty-five-point-one percent A through G completion, and we definitely want to see that rise.
We're also looking at our graduation rate. Our overall baseline is ninety percent, but then if you dig a little deeper, you'll look at our students with disabilities. Again, this is based on our 2018 data. It was sixty-one-point-three percent of those students graduated, and when you look at our English-language learners, it was seventy-one-point-seven percent. So that's our baseline data to look at as we continue over the next three years to see how we can improve on that. We also want to look at some of the other factors that impact academic success, and that's definitely the student support services aspect. We're trying to build social capital, not just with our students, but with our families. We are starting those discussions on mindfulness, and we're just trying, really translating that into meaning self-care and what that looks like. And our access, our student access to resources, not only students, but our families and how they can connect to the community and site-based and online. Our five goals, these are SIPSA goals, but they're also the WASC goals of Westmore High School just recently went through a WASC. We will have a revisit in January of 2020, and so these goals now align with the SIPSA. So thank you, Ms. Baca, because it was a great opportunity to align both of these together, because prior to our conversations with Ms. Baca, we actually had WASC goals and SIPSA goals, and they weren't aligned. And so that makes it really different, because now you're thinking, now we're working on ten goals. And so that makes it, it's very confusing. And so to help our learning community, we brought those goals together through this process. And so our first goal is, again, it's a comprehensive for all students, will participate in a rigorous, relevant, and engaging structural environment. Our goal two, increase our connections and communications with all stakeholders, and we're definitely working on that. Our goal three ties into increasing student support services, again, discussing that social capital, safety, mindfulness, and social-emotional wellness. I won't go through the data, but you know that we definitely have some data that's slightly disturbing about some of the things that we're dealing with. Goal four, increase academic progress in the graduation rates for students with disabilities and students disproportionately impacted, which primarily right now is our foster youth. And then we want to also increase the English-language learner graduation rates. The budgeted expenditures, we have several, but these are some of the highlights. We have designated funds for extended access to resources such as the library. We have staff available before and after school, because we do know that we have students that are telling us that they don't have access to technology. We have an after-school theater club that was new, that we added along with the Cab of Vine Club, and that's in collaboration with Skyline College, and we have a staff member that's working closely with a Skyline instructor. We are obviously looking at the teacher collaboration time to deepen our understanding and our work in the professional learning communities. We definitely started that with our guiding coalition, and so we want to continue that work, along with opportunities for project-based learning, and the staff is trying to work together to find out other ways to kind of engage all the learning abilities of students. And then we also have looked at strategic planning and academic reviews by highly qualified staff, along with providing workshops, study circle groups, and other research-based interventions. And some of that is just gonna be some ongoing work. But our staff is going to look at some research-based strategies in order to help our students that are not performing at the, at their particular grade level.
I want to thank our principal for working through this presentation and working on their SIPSA's, and they've done an amazing job this year. So I'm gonna thank them all and acknowledge them.
Questions and comments?
At the homework center at Jefferson, what does that, like, specifically look like? Because, yeah.
You guys think about the one one two or something?
I don't know, because like, what is like a homework center? Like, what do you need to put in the homework center?
Yeah. We're retooling the one that we had. Quite frankly, you know, we had the YMCA that we had contracted with to do it, and it just, it didn't get the student buy-in that we wanted. So we've kind of taken the tack, I guess you'll be here when I talk about the Flex Time and how that then will kind of work with the homework center. We still want to be able to provide some after-school tutoring, you know, in particular for a lot of kids, of course, you know, that, like most schools, that don't go home right away, you know, maybe a little place to stay and then a little, I mean, have access to computers at home, as we've talked about, so they can provide technology for them, and also be able to pay for tutors, et cetera. For the bulk of our academic interventions, we want to try to find a way to do a journey today, so those kids can play sports, have jobs, have little brothers and sisters that have to take care of when they get home.
I have one comment. So along the five presentations, I noticed that there were a lot of things in common, but specifically you guys talked about chronic absenteeism and emotional wellness, and I'm just kind of curious to see how each school tackles these problems differently.
I know for Westmore, we have been, like, dealing with these issues, and I'd just like to say that if you guys implement a program and it works well for you, you guys should, like, collaborate together and, like, bring it to each other's schools, because if it works for one school, it might work for another, so.
Yeah, the same with the homework center, like, seeing, like, I know we have things at jobs that other schools don't have, and I know, like, at Westmore and things, I've heard about their, like, grading caps and, like, things that they have that our school doesn't have, and that maybe you guys could, like, collab more and seeing how, it's really cool to see. I've never seen, like, all the principals in one place before. So, yeah, it's like the Avengers.
I think they do it like putting, you know, the executive branch and the legislative branch in the same room.
Yeah. Investments from other, like, other districts. Like, we could, you guys should, like, meet more often and have, like, little lunches together.
Eddings.
Create a group chat. Be nice. And we have to, like, talk and get in there.
This all in high hours for years.
I mean, I was going with the Avengers. It was awesome when all of the Avengers got together, it became that superhero fall.
I know, bloody spoiler, just still haven't seen any.
What?
I haven't either, so don't do them either.
The band is.
But with our, any more, any other comments for our assembled Avengers then?
Great job. Did, how did this come together? I'm just so curious.
A lot of late-night tests.
We did request, we did request to have all the principals.
Yeah, but I mean, did you work on a Google Doc together, and that's how you put it together?
I got a Kareen, she's the glue, hours of phone calls.
Cut and paste. What's he gonna write? Cut and paste.
I know what they go through.
Why you should work for.
Yeah, you're supposed to, I'm cut and paste.
Sitting here and watching the whole thing together, you know, even though, yeah, we saw what everyone was doing, at the same time, I'm going back and looking at this and looking forward to when we do this next year, actually being able to, to, you know, spend more time together, look at ways in which we can make this more uniform, doing exactly what Ms. Ovados is talking about, and Ms. Hahn also mentioned, which is, you know, let's, you know, look what's working at one school and what can we bring in, you know? Green hats is actually something we've talked about, in exactly the same way that green hats do, but something similar, because, you know.
Oh, Mr. Delbon was a Jefferson grad.
I've got a couple of questions here, actually. So for, for, for Mr. Morenco, actually, I mean, you, you made a note, I just want to know, what needs specifically happen to transition from that culture of credit recovery to college and career? What are the things that you're thinking about?
It's a multi-dimensional approach, so it's not just necessarily one thing. It's everything from, it's one thing to, it's one thing to see, and it's one thing to feel, it's another to feel. So the most effective way to transform a culture, in my, in my opinion, is then to support the professional development of what is the core of any school, which is instruction. I mean, everything that a school does leads to one thing, is student achievement, from the food, from the parent engagement, from the chronic absenteeism, from the instruction. So if we can continue to figure out the most culturally responsive and inclusive and good initial first teaching, and continue to invest in our, in our teachers, then we will be able to transform the learning, not just at Thornton, but just across all our schools. So the investment that our district has done with constructing meaning, the professional learning communities, those are just two examples of systemic approaches, rather than just plugging holes into what, what could be a problem, but not necessarily something that is sustainable. So I believe that our school is benefiting because of the work that Kareem, Dr. Deloria, Ms. Ben Rafford, and just human resources, to bring this all together, so that we do have the subject matter expertise and those individuals there, bringing them to the table, doing that cross-collaboration, so that then we can bring that back with the, with the realistic action plan that we see examples of tonight.
Impressive. It is good to see all of you in one space at one time. We know that you do me, but I think it is good to model the example for our student trustees and have lunch together and talk about these issues. I do think that a lot of alignment between the different goals we have, we talk about board goals, we talk about district goals, about cycles, there's been a lot of feedback, and I think a lot of, the emphasis on collaboration is what stands out to me, because this is a collaboration of collaboration, right? And so students, they work together, we expect them working pairs and groups, individually in classes, and then to bring that back and create assignments and projects to present their level of education and what they're learning. And so I think as educators, for us to be reflective and self-critical as faculty and staff and admin across the board, to see this manifest in some major priorities and see it all at once is refreshing. I like this model, because I feel like it is good to get ahead of it, especially before the end of the year. And for, of course, we ought to share this and be able to bring it back the same way. I do like the suggestions from the student trustees, though I think that like sharing those things, I always wondered at Westmore having green hats, why they weren't like blue hats and yellow hats and red hats and black and gold hats, you know? It's like, and so like, those are the kind of things that I feel like, those ideas are definitely being shared, I think, between students and ASP and the student trustees, but that cross-pollination is, is kind of what makes, I think, a lot of districts strong. And in other districts, I see it sometimes, big districts kind of stretched thin a bit sometimes. We're a small district and we can't see each other, and I think it's, not just within our district, but like within our community in North County. So inspiring and good to see that our goals are in sight.
I'll just say real quick, because I know she always has lots of positive things to say, and lots of questions, and I'm still new to this, so, but I just want to make a couple of comments and say that it's really, thank you for all you do for all the schools and coming together and uplift all the schools in the district and not just certain ones. And thank you for being progressive and all the things that you are doing and thinking outside of the box and not kind of teaching the students in a traditional way, but rather going to the root causes and, and trying to see what we can do to better all students and not just certain students. And also, you know, help them reach their full potential so that they can kind of see that they can succeed in all the things that they want to succeed in the future and not limited to the things that people want them to see. So thank you for that, and always continued work in progress, so, but thank you for all you do.
Yeah, so just to piggyback on that, so first, thank you, Ms. Baca, for getting this all together, because I, you know, we have plans, and plans, and plans, and goals, and plans, and goals, and plans. Like, there's so many plans and goals. And so I wonder, you know, how many, like, which ones are the ones that are like on the shelf collecting dust, and which ones are the ones that are actually being acted upon? And so this is very helpful for me as a board member to see, having just gone through our LCAP work-study, you know, last week, and then following it right with this week, to see the alignment. It's just hugely beneficial, so that when I, when I'm talking about the vision and the mission of the district, that I'm, that we are all speaking the same language, that I'm not saying something that's completely different from what you're saying when you're talking to the community. So I really appreciate this. I also appreciate the focus on A to G. I remember when I first started as a board member, I was kind of shocked that none of the principals discussed A to G. And as I've gone further and worked on just focusing on equity, we've been involved in an equity workshop through the California School Boards Association this, this entire year, Andy and I as school board members. And then, you know, I've never been a huge fan of standardized testing, but as we learned more about the system and learning more about the history of standardized tests, I'm a less fan of them now, even the SAT, right? And really looking at the history of the creators and eugenics and, so when I talk about, when I push A to G, it's not because of the, when people hear A to G, they hear like, you just want everybody to go to college, which I do. But, but also, I want, I had another standard of measuring our students that's based more in the educational knowledge and foundation of our teachers and our administrators, and less on people that I've never seen before in my life putting questions on a piece of paper. So to me, that is why I push A to G, and why I think that is a better standard of where the success of our students lies, because it's a reflective of the grades that the teachers are giving, and less on this one thing that, you know, I don't know how the students are feeling when they're taking that test on one given day or on any given day. And then also, you know, I have three different kids. I have a child that would have nailed that test regardless who her teacher was. And I have another child who just doesn't test, right? So, but they all had that connection with their teachers. So I'm very glad about that. On suspensions, like I know, and we talked about this in LCAP, that it's a constant of just lower suspensions, lower suspensions. And for me, we do need to keep an eye on suspensions, but the thing that's more important to me is looking at the disproportionality of suspension, not really the number, like, we just have to have it lower, lower, lower every year. So if there's a, if we plateau, because there's, you know, teenage, teenagers, teenagers, and sometimes everybody has a moment where they step on a line and may need some discipline. So I'm, you know, I'm not anti-discipline, I just don't want the discipline disproportionately applied. And so that's the number that I'm more focused on, not that we just can never send a student out of class, because sometimes there may be a need to send a student out of class. And then, having that piggybacked, I'm glad that we're all are talking about the training of the staff, because I feel, like I've said this before, that we've taken that tool away, but we haven't replaced it with training on how, what do you do if you can't send a student out of class. And also, the explanation of the why. Like, we, we've never really explained the why this is important, and so more focus on that, I think, would be fantastic, because I think we're constantly saying, you just can't, or don't, or we would like to do this, but we don't explain why that is the bigger picture of why that's really important. So thank you guys for all really focusing on that. And then, the, there was one other thing. So Thornton, it was the first school to discuss bias, so thank you. And I know everyone's working with Circle Up, but I do, I really hope, and I know that I am an impatient person at Florence, to be patient, and I know that that's slow work and that's slow process, but I do really want to have that turned, the focus get bigger and bigger as we get a little bit more stable, and especially, you guys are all like new, and learning and feeling your jobs out, so I don't want to add more to your plate, but I do like that focus to continue to grow. And, and the last thing I have, just specific questions. On the, on the gym, what is the funding being used for? Like, I know it's connecting mentors, but what actually is the funding being used for?
Well, actually, Keisha.
Sorry, Keisha, I'm gonna throw you.
So actually, just to put it in context, it came from a group that, a social worker and a mental health clinician.
Okay.
Weekly, to discuss like student issues. So students who continue to come up.
I see, I see.
And so looking at a more systemic way of identifying those students. And then the gym is actually one of our level-two tiers of support.
Okay, got it.
So the primary thing would be, would go towards a stipend, because we'd like for the mentors who are going to work specifically with three stu-, up to three students, identified as needing additional support. So that would be like an annual stipend for them.
Okay.
As well as training, because I understand that, I think our SPED department has gone through collaborative, collaborative proactive solutions as an approach to solving problems with students. And so the mental health clinician would work with the mentors on collaboratively working with the students who need additional support. So it's the stipend, it's the training, and then also some incentives for the students who reach their, their goals.
Okay, that, thank you. And then the last thing I just want to say is, I'm so appreciative of each and every one of you. I mean, some of you were hired, but others were asked, like, you stepped up into this lot for us. And so regardless of how you came here, you guys all really stepped up for us, and especially through some really challenging times. And I'm, you know, I can't tell you how appreciative I am of each and every one of you and all the work that you've done. And so I just want to be sure that, you know, we're taking care of you, and that we are asking a lot of you, but I do want it to be a two-way of making sure that communication going through Dr. Deloria of telling us what you need as well, in order to do your job successfully, and that you do have time to think, right? You know, because a lot of great ideas come out of free time to have creative moments. And I know that it is like a constant fire being put out, but I do also want, you know, leaders need time to have rest periods to be able to think, to engage. And so what can we do to help with that process? I mean, we, we'd love to continually have this type of feedback and ongoing conversations, so please, please don't be shy about asking for help, because we're, we want to be able to do that.
Yeah, yeah, thank you for the presentation tonight. Some very, some very good things. Couple of other questions that I had. One, I mean, we, Circle Up was brought up in a couple of presentations, and I know all five of you are doing Circle Up, and you're all at different stages of that training. So just, just in brief, give me, you know, the thirty-second Reader's Digest highlight. What do you expect to gain from Circle Up at your school? We'll start, we'll actually, yeah, we'll start with you, Mark.
What I'm really, you know, focused on with Tiffany for next year does have to do with restorative justice training. And we, we've had, you know, our book clubs amongst, you know, our admin team, but we realized, okay, as proficient as we might learn to be in there, if it's not happening in the classroom, then we're, you know, we're always just going to be straying one on that. And so, so that's something we've talked about with Tiffany. We really want to, really want to get deep in that with our staff as well. And, and again, the climate committees, you know, I can't tell you enough about when I sit down, you know, with my student climate committee, you know, just the things that come out of their mouths, that, you know? I mean, you think, oh, I've been doing this for years, I know what the kids think. No, you don't. No, you don't. Not until you sit there and you let them tell you that.
We did a lot of work, staff to staff, including inclusive staff, not just teachers, especially on implicit bias, staff to staff, and then got some really, some really real conversations. And then we, there was a shift in about mid-year where staff said, we've got so much structured stuff that is being put out during our Wednesday meetings. We need time to talk to each other. And so we backed off a little bit and did a lot more team-building and getting to know each other as human beings, because you can study implicit bias, and you can study it in the abstract, and you can talk about instances, but until, I think, people have a really solid understanding of who each other are as individuals, you can't really go anywhere. And so I think we, we started sort of going really strong, and then we backed off so that we could really get to know each other as human beings. And I think that's where we are right now.
I think for me, one of the things are, what I'm hoping to gain is, it's not what we do, it's how we operate. So it's just how we communicate with each other, how we resolve conflict, how we continue to then focus on what's most important, which is the learning in the classroom. Because if we have more, if we have continuing, continuous improvement in relationships with students, if we're able to resolve conflict in a way that we have mutual understanding, students and staff understand that we, each other hold each other to high expectations, and we can do that in a way that's polite and courteous, and embraces each other's differences, and we can ultimately look at ways that we're addressing implicit bias. And what I mean by that is how there's, how we can continue to reflect the teaching and learning of all cultures embedded in the curriculum, then I believe that we're going to lead to more student success.
So at Terranova, with our work with Circle Up, and just to kind of piggyback a little bit on some of the feedback from the student trustees, it was probably about this time last year that I reached out to Mr. Bashir's after, or maybe in March, I think, after the school site board meeting, and started talking with Mark about some of what was being felt on campus. And that's where I got the idea to start a staff climate committee. So we started work with the staff climate committee at the end of last year, and then Tiffany joined in on that this year. And we just started a student climate committee, and I agree, you're always amazed by what the kids, what the kids start to talk with you about and, and share. So working with Tiffany on moving those two groups forward is going to be huge. And then we've also started conversations about targeted support for our freshman teachers. We've noticed at Terranova that it's freshman year where the students fall off track the most, right? And once you fall off track in terms of attendance and grades, it's so much harder to get back on track. And partnering with Tiffany and training our freshman core teachers on relationship building, community building strategies that they can pilot in their classrooms at regular intervals throughout the year is something that we're looking at starting. intervals throughout the year is something that we're looking at starting next year, so.
And at Westmore High School, we're at the beginning stages, so we're just collecting data. We have, we have a staff survey that was sent out, and we were real excited. We were hoping for about 80, we had 60 staff members respond. We collected perception data from the leadership team, and took the facility down last week. And, and now we just recently sent out a staff, a student survey that will hopefully go out third period tomorrow to students. So we're definitely at the early stages, and then we want to make, obviously, a data-driven decision in terms of where we go next, because, I mean, there's some perception data, and we think there's value in that, because obviously that's how people are feeling. But we also want to see the actual data and see how that aligns, and then move forward with a strategic plan. So that's our wrap.
Thank you. That's, I mean, I, I mean, just talking about the equity work that we've, we're starting to do as a board, you know, and will be continuing on, and it's really about aligning all of us with that work. You know, and we, we have to take the lead, you know, and it's good that we've got all these pockets that are happening, but, you know, I think next year is the year where I think we're going to start to see all these things really coalesce, because it is, I mean, for me personally, I know the equity topic is probably at the forefront for me next year, and I think, and I would agree, I would believe that the rest of the board, it's also a big issue. And it's heartening to hear just the different things where everybody is along the process, and let's just pull everybody along, because it's the hard work. And Ms. Hall, what you, what you were saying was exactly the sorts of things that we were dealing with, with the equity work that we did this year, where it was like, suddenly it became, you know, we're confronted, and it's in our face, right? And you have to look in the mirror, and it's painful to do that. And I, and I think that's where, in order for us to be able to do that for all of our students, all of us, bored on down to the person answering the phones, you know, we have to be able to look in the mirror and see how we view our students through that lens. Thank you, all.
Yeah, thank you. And I, I just want to, there are times when I, there are a lot of things we know that no other people know. And I just think, thank God we have the principals and their admin that we have. Thank God we have you. So I just want to thank you for all the work you're doing, your resilience, your strength, your courage. You kept saying that you were just at the beginning of Circle Up, you're just at the beginning. It's the end of the school year, but you're still going ahead with it. Thank you. And Carly loves being on that school climate committee. She won't miss it ever. There was an email that went home talking about the school climate committee, so I thought I had to go, and she said, no, you don't get to go. It's for students. I said, is Mr. Bashir there? Yes, but he's allowed to be there. So I just want to thank you so much for everything you do for us.
Shout out to the VP as well.
Yes, and yes, give your admin teams a thank you from us as well.
Definitely.
You know, and they know, and I'm down, so thank you all very much for a great presentation. Oh, Dr. Deloria.
We're sorry.
I have a few thoughts. And, you know, Michael Follen, one of my academic buddies, he says, a school, a district cannot be great unless each of its individual schools is great. And he talks about coherence. So I hope that one of the things you heard tonight, it should give you great comfort to know that our principals are working on some coherence issues. Coherence in what we want students to learn, coherence in how we're going to assess what students learn, coherence on how we're going to provide support. And it's not that everybody's doing things exactly the same way, but they're still coherent. So I, I hope you heard that tonight. People often think that being the superintendent is the most difficult job in the district. And I won't disagree that it's hard. But a principal's job is by far the most difficult, and, and here's why. They have to maneuver this tension between what you want and what I want, and what their staff wants. And, and so they know, I mean, when this, when the data comes out, the buck stops with them, and they know that. And yet they don't oftentimes have a lot of control over some of the things that they have to, have to manage. So they're managing this tension between, you've got to push and move fast enough that your initiatives don't stall out, but if you go too fast, you have rebellion. And that's a very fine line to maneuver, and I think the five of them have done an exceptional job of that this year. The other thing is, do you hear how they're talking? It's, it's funny that you say, oh, you've got them all together, and yet they do spend quite a bit of time together. And the big difference I've seen in the year and a half, a year and two-thirds that I've been here, is when I first got here, principals used to play their cards close. If they had something that worked, they didn't necessarily share. But it gets back to, they care, I think that Grace cares almost as much as the rest of her colleague's schools as she does her own. She cares about Westmore the most, but she cares about the other four schools almost as much. And I think all the principals feel that way. I mean, they're all of our students, and so I, I hope you heard that. Make sure I got all my points here. Coherence, hardest job. Oh, and I, I do have to give a shout out to the district admin team, because there's been a big shift in the way the district interacts with principals. Our job at the district office is to support your work. If we're just giving you more work to do, that's a problem. So how do we help you with hiring? I mean, we, we were out the gate in January and February this year. You had your numbers, we're, you know, we hope we're in a better place than where we were a year ago. You know, we have Tina, who, she has this machine back in her office, printing up money so we can do all these things.
It's like, mm, don't even say that word.
Just kidding, but really, and Corinne too. So all, all three, all of those departments and the directors under them, there's been a fundamental shift in the way that we're, I, I think, we still have some things to iron out, but there's been a fundamental shift in the way we're interacting. And I think that helps clear some of the clutter, not all of it, but clear some of that clutter out, so they can focus what's important. And they're all coming back next year. So, well done, well done.
Yes.
Thank you, yep, thank you all.
Thank you.
All right.
Yes, you do.
If you've done a roll, if you've done a roll, that's totally understandable.
Yeah. Do you need to go in, Julianne, because, do you have a test tomorrow or anything?
Oh, you're done.
Have you checked out yet? Have you formally done your senior check out?
I have four out of six signatures.
All right.
Almost there, two-thirds there.
I think your parents look like they're ready for you to go, though.
Yeah, you're fine. Take a minute.
Good night.
Night, Chanel.
All right, item fifteen.
Good night, Erica.
Fifteen B1 through three, board policies. And they are forty-two hundred, forty-two twelve, and forty-two fifteen. Dr. Deloria.
So forty-two hundred, just some tiny tweaks, so that we were current with CSBA. Forty-two twelve, we didn't have, and CSBA recommends that, so I've added that. And then forty-two fifteen, there's no change in the language, but there are changes in citations because of laws that were sunsetted and new laws that came in.
Great.
So sorry I couldn't get to more, but there they are.
Do you have any questions, comments from anybody regarding those three policies? Okay.
Yeah, no. Yeah, I know.
Yeah, we see, we see the look over there.
Someone has to teach tomorrow.
Action items, item sixteen A1, resolution twenty-eighteen slash nineteen dash twenty-three, designating a specific product on a construction project. Ms. Van Routhhorst.
Thank you, President Lee. Good evening, everyone. The purpose of this resolution is to allow us to use a specific product for our surveillance security cameras. We would like all of the systems to be the same and be able to work together, and we've done a lot of research into what would be a good product for our schools. And in order to be able to specify this product in the bid process, we have to adopt a resolution. And a lot of districts do this for security cameras and other security systems, because it constitutes an emergent threat to students and staff. So this was vetted by our legal team, and we recommend that you approve this resolution.
Any questions? Is there a motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion passes. Sixteen A2, resolution twenty-eighteen slash nineteen dash twenty-four, partial tax, parcel tax election results and request to levy.
All right.
Ms. Van Routhhorst.
Thank you. After the passage of the November twenty-eighteen parcel tax election, this is the next step in the process for the board to adopt a resolution entering the results of the election into the board minutes, and requesting the Board of Supervisors for the San Mateo County to include this parcel tax on the tax rolls.
Is there a motion?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Very better.
This was just last November.
Yeah, I know. All right. Item sixteen A3, public hearing and approval of naming of the native plant garden at Westmore High School. Ms. Van Routhhorst.
Thank you. So this item, I should have brought on May seventh, but there was some confusion about whether it needed to come in front of the board or not. So working with Ms. Tia Tia, who had brought the information to you in the last meeting, we decided it was better to actually come to the board and ask for approval for this garden to be named in dedication to Mr. Delbonne, rather than just saying it's dedicated and not having the board approval. And so we are asking tonight, she wanted to be here, but she couldn't make it tonight, but she made it to the last board meeting. She talked about the ways that Mr. Delbonne has contributed to the Westmore community and to the greater Jefferson Union High School community as a whole. Additionally, she, I don't know if she mentioned it that night, but she told me that the officers from the Environmental Action Club that run the garden unanimously recommend that he be considered for this honor. So according to our board policy, seventy-three ten, the governing board can approve the naming of a facility at a school following a public hearing. So we would need to open a public hearing, see if anybody has any comments, close the public hearing, and then the board can take action.
Opening the public hearing. Any comments? I'll take that to thumbs. All right, all right, closing the public hearing. Is there a motion to approve the name of the plant, native plant garden at Westmore High School for Mr. Don Delbonne?
To approve the naming of the native plant garden at Westmore High School after Don Delbonne.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, very good. Thank you very much. Item sixteen B1, Grizzly-Fletchtime presentation, Mr. Bashir's, come on back up.
I hope y'all are getting seconded.
No, we love so much.
Everything today, you guys get real familiar with the sound of my voice. Wow. Notice how everything, by the way, at Jefferson, we, we add Grizzly in front of it, it's like having a bat phone, you know?
Can we just call it Grizzly Mark Bashir's?
Why not? Why not?
Mark Grizzly.
It was actually at the Westmore game that, you know, our kids were doing that, which I, I never allow it if I'm around, what they do that week more, they start sounding week more, week more, you know? And I went over and I fussed at some of the players, and I was like, come on. Because it was some of my football players that were sitting up in the stands doing it. I'm like, come on, guys, we're better than this. So one of them goes, can we, can we do bear paws? I was like, now that's good. And so at the, you know, the Westmore rivalry, it actually, you know, inspired the Grizzly bear paw that we know. So I'm going to go to my Grizzly notes, and...
Have a Grizzly day.
I'll, I'll... Free to run this into the ground.
It's Grizzly riffing.
Say it's Grizzly riffing?
Yeah, it's late.
It's late for all of us. All right, you better roll, Mr. Bashir's.
All right, let's get through this here, all right? This is something that was, I'm, I'm very excited about. This is, you know, I remember Dr. Deloria saying to me once, you know, that one of our jobs as principals is to, is to help the group move the group, you know? And I really feel like this was something that, you know, was born of something the teachers wanted. It kind of rose out of the ashes of something that, that, that we used to have and then lost. And if we can go to the first slide, I'll talk about the objective. Now, what we wanted to do is to be able to create a structure within the school day to allow for improved academic interventions. We see this at, at schools elsewhere, why can't we have it at Jefferson? We want students to have the flexibility to, you know, to work on, on missing assignments, to do makeup tests, retakes, meet with counselors, or get extra help in, in learning content during the school day, you know? And I mean, I think most of us know this. I mean, if, if you've got, and I was talking to some of the kids earlier, that some of the young people on the board, when you look at the homework, you guys saw the survey data, you know? And they talk about the amount of work that they have just to keep up with their academic responsibilities. And then you add some of them have jobs, little brothers and sisters to take care of. Maybe they, they're on a, on an athletic team. You know, that suddenly, you know, sometimes getting done with all of your academic work becomes very difficult. So, give you a little bit of background, and actually, I could even go back farther than this, for those of you who might remember when Jefferson was four little schools, we were in small learning communities. And at that time, we had an advisory. You, you had your students for, for four years. I loved my advisory. I was an E.L. teacher at the time, and, and so I had the same group of students, and I got to work with them. Some of the time, yeah, you give them some time for, for working on their studies, for academic enrichment, and some of it was community building, and you got really close. The kids got really attached to you, and they got really attached to one another. It, it was hard at Jefferson to fly under the radar. It was hard to not have somebody who was looking out for you. Unfortunately, it added contacts to teachers, and, and therefore, it was just not, you know, contractually tenable. So in twenty-seven, twenty-eighteen, the staff met to discuss the possibility of including a tutorial or an advisory period, and it was Ms. Ashford and Mr. Gold who, who brought it to the staff. We had a, we had a long discussion, you know, it was very emotional at times. In the end, most of the staff agreed that a tutorial benefi-, uh, would, would, a tutorial period would benefit our students, and, and would avoid the pitfall of the advisory. So I sent a group of teachers down to Cappuccino High School to let them observe what they did down there. They call it academic support time. Principal Shanks was, was extremely welcoming to us, and, and she spent a lot of time with me on the phone talking about it. So then the union and, and, and the district, they agreed to a memo of understanding to allow Jeff to explore a tutorial. So again, I sent another group to cap, we had a group go down to Mills. I've been speaking with the, with the principals at, at, at both of those schools, as well as the principal at Aragon, and, and also just some teachers that I know around, you know, and, you know, what were their experiences in doing a tutorial. So the, the memo of understanding, you know, allowed Jefferson to explore the tutorial period. To implement this, we needed to get seventy-five percent of our teachers to vote. Ninety percent of those votings needed, needed to vote yes. The, the MOU stipulated this is non-instructional duty, so we weren't, you know, adding contacts, and, and specifically said that tutorials shall not count towards total contacts. The proposal then, that, that we were looking at, is that Jefferson will offer two flex periods, Grizzly Flex Time or GFT, within the week. We will adjust our existing bell schedule on Tuesdays and Thursdays to include a thirty-minute academic support period before lunch. So, great, you know, we can talk about it amongst ourselves, and we can talk about it with the teachers, you know? I needed to get in and see what, what students thought about it. I went in and visited the English eleven classes to, to discuss it with them. I felt like, okay, these are the kids that are going to be most impacted next year. I mean, next year's a critical year for these people. And I walked in, you know, each one of the classes, I asked them, how many of you are confident going into your senior year that you're on track to graduate? And I didn't ask them to raise their hands, you know, I just said, guys, just, just in your own mind. And you'd see some kids nodded very confidently, they know, and you saw others, because they're not good poker players, you know? And you saw others that, like, yeah, they have concerns. And then the next question I asked them was like, hey, what are your responsibilities in the afternoon? And again, you heard, yeah, I play sports, I have a job, I have a little brother, I have a little sister. Many of them had things that they needed to do. So, I'm sorry, this gets really tiny here, but I'll just run through the questions. At the end of the presentation, I asked the students, you know, I gave, I passed out a survey. Did my presentation help you understand what Grizzly Flex Time is? I had eighty respond yes, I had one respond no, and then fifty said somewhat. We did, amongst the, the presentation, I've left it out of this one, but there was a really great video that Mills produced. Actually, it was a very cheesy video that Mills produced that my student climate committee laughed at when they saw it, but it was kind of helpful in, in understanding what they were doing, but they have vowed to do a much better video than the one Mills did. I asked them, do you feel as though you would benefit from extra study time built into the school day? You know, we had ninety-one students say yes, I had two respond no. And one of them, I think, was just really trying to annoy me that day, so... Most likely to use Flex Time for? And, and students could mark more than one answer, so, you know, we had eighty-two said that they'd use it to catch up on homework, twenty-six, get ready for test. they'd use it to catch up on homework, twenty-six get ready for test, seventeen said that they would use it to relax and reflect, and I think that that's kind of important. You know, if you go, you know, if you've got algebra in the morning and you're learning formulas, and then the next class you go to, I don't know, maybe you're in a biology class or whatever, I mean, do you have any time in the day just to think about what it is you just learned? And then four students said that they would play on their cell phones, and prompting me to set aside funds for cellphone caddies for each classroom. Place that they can just collect these things.
Every comment helps.
Doesn't it though? But then, of course, the last question I thought was the most important one, you know, should Jefferson High School add a Flex Time period next year? And ninety-one of the students said yes, I only had two that said no. And so, that seemed like a good idea to go forward. So, the team of teachers that went to the different schools, we sat and we had meetings and we started going, okay, well, what could this look like? Can we start to give it shape? We agreed that the GFT would be held on Tuesdays and Thursdays. Those students were maintaining academic progress, what they get to do, I mean, it's in the name, Flex Time, they get to determine which of their six teachers they can visit during that period. Teachers, however, they have the option of scheduling an appointment with a student, you know, so when this happens, the student must show up to that appointment. What you would see at both Mills and Cappuccino, they use an app called Teach More. Students have access to it on a school computer, they can download it on their phone, teachers have access to it as well. So let's say, you know, Mr. Ochapinta, you had a student that needed to come by and finish a test, you know, you could put it into the app, so they're scheduling, maybe they want to go to, you know, hang out with a different teacher, boom, it comes up and read, ooh, no, I've got a test, I gotta go to Mr. Ochapintis that day. So, that's how students know where they're supposed to be. Other than that, though, if they feel, hey, I need some extra help in this class, or my study group is meeting in this class, they get the flexibility to choose where they're going to go. If a student is struggling academically, they're gonna check into an intensive tutorial, and this is where they'll receive support, and the administrators are gonna run it, we're going to bring tutors in there, also, the paraprofessionals will be expected to be in there. And then, once that student's grades improve at the end of the six weeks, they'll be free once again to make their decisions about where they get to go during Grizzly-Flex Time. And this was something that Principal Shanks believed in very strenuously, she, and in fact, CAP did not continue it after she left, but in the Flex Time that she's starting, because I can't remember, she opened a new school, and, but she wanted that in there as well. We're looking at probably offering it, at first, we've got to see, you know, after the first six weeks, how many kids are gonna need it, and are we gonna focus on freshmen or maybe freshmen and sophomores? So, that still remains to be seen what we do. Students can only check into one classroom during GFT, so if they go to their math teacher, they're there for that entire period, so that, you know, Naomi and Nate and Johnny Ray don't have to run around and chase kids all day long. All teachers should expect students to bring the materials they need to be productive during Flex Period, they're expected to follow all of the rules that a teacher may have in the classroom. You know, teachers are able to address behavior issues as they would in any other class, and these were things, you know, the teachers certainly wanted to be reassured, you know, on this, hey, you know, how much are you expecting us to do, you know, what's the heavy lifting, you know, what's gonna be on our shoulders, you know, will we still have administrative support if there's behavior issues? At the beginning of GFT, students report to class, they check in with their IDs, this check-in process notifies a student if they have an appointment with another teacher or perhaps their counselor. If a student doesn't scan in for GFT, they're, you know, they're gonna get marked for cutting. This is what the bell schedule is going to look like, this is really, you know, one of the things that the students were very, very interested in when I was talking to them about it. Mr. B, are you gonna get rid of brunch?
Yes, yeah.
And that was, and I'll say this, this was, the teachers were also very insistent, let's keep brunch in there, our kids need it, and I think also, you know, really, I mean, yeah, teachers recognize that, that's your first bathroom break during the day, you know, so, yeah, they still wanted that in there. So, what we've done is we've taken five minutes off of each period, and that's given us that, the half hour tutorial. Let's go to the next slide. So, obviously, we've got to see, is this going to work? What, you know, how are we going to measure the success? And we're looking at improved grades, obviously, we want to see, you know, how is this helping them just day-to-day with their teachers, turning in work, maintaining their academic load? Obviously, we're gonna look at testing data, EL reclassification rates, you can see, these are tied to things that were in our SIPSA, you know. I'll get to that fourth point in a second, and we'll conduct surveys as well, because I think, you know, some of the anecdotal data may also be helpful. I don't know how that fourth one's gonna play out, and it's my hope that maybe we can see this also impact attendance in a positive way, you know, for one, if students feel as though they're being more successful, there's not really anything to avoid, right, there's not a reason to not be at school. The other thing is, you know, I've been, you know, going through DF reports and I've been looking at it, you know, since we've, and for very good reasons, but since we got rid of the rotational schedule, guess what, I've got kids that are failing first period because they're not showing up at first period. Those kids, because of the F's they'll be earning, they'll be put in with Mr. B's intensive tutorial, and our hope is, is that will be, you know, something that will be like, yeah, I would rather have that flexibility back, I would rather be able to do what I see my friends going out and doing, let's go ahead and get caught up, because you're stuck there until you do, you know, and so, might as well do it, and that might just have to include getting to school on time. So, and you'll see, I left in some of the things that I had the teachers talk about in here when I was redoing this presentation for the Board, you know, we talked about the benefits, and I think that all students obviously can benefit from it, you know, obviously, you know, we're looking at athletes missing that fifth or sixth period class, you know, and then there are students who just, well, I mean, my EL students will not stay late at the end of the day, they have responsibilities, so many of them have jobs, and again, you know, the ones that I spoke with, they were like, no, I gotta go home, I got a little brother, I got a little sister, they were not taking advantage of the after-school program. I sent, you know, I made sure our visiting committees also included my sped department chair, Ms. Lori Demma, and she came back, you know, and was like, well, now, what about those, you know, our special ed students who, you know, are on that cusp, maybe we could put them in more gen ed classes, really focus on inclusion? Can we reduce service minutes if, you know, they're getting the time they need during the day? So that could be a huge benefit there. I left my staff with these questions, you know, before we went to the vote. I actually got those things from Buckminster Fuller, and I won't go into all of that, but I can talk Bucky Fuller with you guys anytime you ever want to, but, is this gonna be desirable? Can you see this benefiting our students? If it's desirable, is it feasible? The fact is, you know, I had a group of teachers, and I selected the teachers very carefully that went to visit these other schools, and, you know, when they came back and said, well, I don't see what Aragon's got on the ball that we don't have, I don't see what Mills can do that we can't do, and why in the world is Cappuccino being able to pull this off? What have they got that we don't have? So if it's desirable and it's feasible, what's stopping us? So, here were the results of the vote. We had fifty-seven out of our sixty-five teachers vote, so that, we hit the, you know, seventy-five percent, well past it, only had three that voted against the proposal, we had fifty-four that voted in favor of the proposal. So, again, like I said, this was an example of the group moving the group. I was really thrilled at all the work that the teachers had put into it, the ones who went down and visited, and then, just the amount of discussion that went on afterwards, you know, because probably, if after I had done the presentation and we'd just voted that day, I don't know that it would have passed. Really, you know, Mr. Berg broke down the math and he said, yeah, if we'd had two people vote against two people, other, you know, in addition to the three that voted against it, if I had a total of five, we wouldn't be having this talk right now. And it was actually Principal Carey that pointed out to me, the reason you set such a high threshold on something like that is because you want this much buy-in from your teacher.
Commitment, you want commitment.
So, that is Grizzly-Flex Time. What questions do you guys have?
Do we know why the three voted, just that we know why they voted, what was the concern for it?
Well, I know one of the teachers that spoke to me was there when we did small learning communities, and he was still concerned that this was too much like advisory. Fact is, like, you know, you guys know Jefferson has an Equity Committee, an entirely voluntary group that gets together and they meet and they come and they meet with me, they'll meet with Keisha, they make recommendations all the time, there are many of them that actually were pushing for advisory, that they didn't feel as though Flex Time went far enough. I actually believe as we move on in PLC culture, you know, as we start developing that, I think teachers are going to start to see the benefits of it, I mean, you could talk to anybody who teaches over at Oceana, and they're gonna tell you the benefit of advisory over there, right? I think that, you know, taking this step forward, and ultimately, the teachers on the Equity Committee would agree, that this is that first step towards looking, you know, I think once we do this, by the way, this is something that every principal that I spoke with said, the way you do it the first year is not the way you're gonna do it the second year, third year, on down the line. And in fact, Principal Shanks said that, she goes, look, we changed it up every single year. You know, she says, don't be afraid of failing, don't be afraid of the difficulties that you might have, you know, and so with that, that, you know, that gave me the inspiration to feel like, yeah, we can go into this, you know, knowing that, you know, if we fail in one area or the other, we're a resilient group, we can pick it up, we can get it back going again. And also, that as we're looking for improvements, we may just find, you know, hey, we want to go farther than this.
Great plan. Group driving the group is a good way to put it, and I think that it's good to see that collaboration professional development, these are the kind of things we talk about, providing room for collaboration in that sense, and also providing time for students to be outside of the regular classroom environment schedule is Flex Time, is some kind of like navigation of the way we want to be college prep, office hours, and so, it's a perfect segue for that. I also think that, you know, being a policy last year, we had a similar proposal, but it wasn't as developed, it wasn't as driven from the inside out, it was something that I think leadership had a vision for, but wasn't able to develop within the scope of the year and the planning, and so the collaboration that we had didn't get this far, and so I'm proud to see this here, because we had an MTSS list of students who needed help to this effect, and even more, a large number, we'll say, and so, I know those students are going to Jeff, and I know those students should and can expect that, because these are the kind of things we do in special education, special education is good education.
Right.
So, when you talk about, you know, RTI and a lot of these approaches and PBIS, like, those are good support systems, but in action, it's having time to work with students outside of the regular classroom environment, sometimes allowing them to self-select, you know what, I need time to just get out of the, you know, the regular schedule and be able to find the help I need, and so that self-advocacy is a huge part of, I think, helping students identify their own strengths and challenges and achieve their goals, and so, I'm very happy to see the democracy in action here, and that voting, it speaks for itself, and the student input, because there are a lot of things that you can do in the course of a school day, but I know homework is not trending, and many school districts I've worked at is, you know, there are concerns, the students do have lives and other things on their plate, so, having that time in school to emphasize that there is work outside of class, but we need to find time to time manage that and help them get ahead of it in a responsible way, that they take some ownership responsibility that they want, and they want that time. So, yeah, and I think it will look different every year, I do think that, so, and this is really exciting to see that, I hope it does kind of create that kind of interest across the district.
And, you know, and we're not, you know, you mentioned how you guys, you know, talked about it at TRP, but it wasn't as flushed out, you know, fortunately, we're not, you know, we're not creating this in a vacuum, I feel as though, you know, that there, you know, I've built relationships with principals in the county now that I know that I can go to. You know, frankly, Dr. Deloria and Corinne both gave us a lot of guidance, you know, in going forward with this, so I feel like we have the support around there that we can make this successful.
This is pretty exciting to see, you know, this, you know, I mean, to try something totally different, and to battery have built up the coalition to be able to, you know, to get the passage that you needed and to get the buy-in, I mean, all of that, I think it's really remarkable, and I know, we're interested to see how the other schools watch the experiment of Grizzly-Flex Time, and they all start, we'll call it Shark-Flex Time and Tiger-Flex Time.
Yeah, you know, all of the other principals telling, hey, we're watching this, you know, let's see how you do, yeah, so they, that goes back to, you know, you're saying that this is, you know, we do care about each other, we're not five separate confederacies, we are, you know, all part of a team, you know.
Carly's excited. She wasn't sure at first.
Yeah?
She goes, what is, I don't understand why.
It's always, are they gonna get rid of brunch? That's always the question.
Food, food.
Are they, are they gonna get rid of brunch?
Particularly with the food being as good as it is now.
When I was there during the day, you know, teachers were talking, teachers, oh God, I just loved watching the teachers sit together and, you know, eating candy and desserts and talking about things, and you had a whole group of new teachers.
Oh my gosh, it's, it's like, no, I won't say. You know how you're around babies all the time, you go, oh my God, I just, I wanna, I'm gonna feel younger if I sniff your head, and that's how I felt watching these teachers.
I know, I'm sorry.
But she can just like eye roll. Energizing to watch them excited, talking about their students and what they're gonna be doing, and, but they also were talking about the Flex Time, and it was all positive.
Many of them went to, they did their student teaching at schools that already had that built in.
They already had it, oh.
And, well, I tell you, you know, I mean, we talk about listening to our students, and we need to listen to our young teachers, they're coming in, having read the latest, you know, having tried the latest, you know, and we really benefit from getting them a voice.
And at EL awards night, a lot of the teachers, they're first-year teachers, and they have a bond, it is wonderful to see, you know, so, I really appreciate all the work that you, and, this is, you can't bring this to teachers to get buy-in unless you have bought in completely, and that you have done not just the homework, but the work. So, to present it in such a way, I mean, when you told me it passed, I was like, what? That is amazing, that's fantastic, because you really can't, this can't be like a simple fifty-one percent, it's gotta be...
I don't think I could get fifty-four teachers to agree on a cellphone policy. No, I mean, for them all to go for this, right?
It's a goal, you should make it a goal.
That speaks to how committed your staff is, though, to student success.
And also, like, I was there on presentation day, and I don't want to say, like, the food had anything to do with it, but, I'm joking. But I was there on presentation day, and it was a great presentation, like, I really feel like the way it was rolled out was, created the space for people to just be, you know, have those discussions, talk about it, and then vote, and not feel like this was something that's been...
But it's taken two years, so, you had to slowly seep that stuff out there, and it's no easy thing getting everybody to agree.
Yeah, yeah.
But your excitement is palpable, you know, and I mean, as, I mean, your, the excitement in your voice as you're presenting this to us, it's, you know, it's, you know, it's great, so, this is an action item.
Even my A student, I mean, Andy knows, I called him on Sunday night, because she was having a meltdown, because she didn't know how to log into her account from home, and I was hoping Hank was still awake to ask him, it was, and so, she said, I guess I'm gonna have to print it out at brunch, but, you know, these sorts of things happen, and, you know, this is a good example of, you know, any student.
Yeah, so just to finish my, I was, but I'm glad that, when we're talking about disrupting the system and thinking about how do we approach things in different ways, so that we can capture as many students as possible, and we're talking about if the students aren't available to receive the services, then what's the point of offering the services? So, making sure that we're doing things in a way that we meet the students is phenomenal, so thank you guys both, because I know you both worked on it very hard, Keisha. Yeah, I would thank both of you for all the work that you guys have done, so thank you.
Well, this is an action item, so is there a motion?
Move to approve Grizzly-Flex Time.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Congratulations.
Congratulations, Mark.
Can't wait to see the experiment.
Have a grizzly day.
Have a grizzly night.
All right, item seventeen, Consideration of Future Agenda Items, anything?
We need to schedule our meeting for the beginning of the superintendent evaluation.
Yes, we need to do that.
I don't know, that's why we need to schedule it, yeah. I don't know, that's why we, we need to schedule it, yeah.
Superintendent needs to do her.
Well, we have to meet first, so you have time, because, yeah.
Yeah.
So who knows when we're going to be able to meet.
Next week's a little nutty, and I'm out of town the week after. I'm out of town the week of June 3rd through the 6th. I mean, I can make time next week if we have to.
Do you need my write-up by next week?
No.
It's graduation next week.
Yeah. It's not a happy week either.
Monica, go home, you have a big day tomorrow.
And we have our, and we actually have our, our district office site board meeting next Thursday, the 30th, actually. Unless we wanted to get together after that, since we'll be here.
Okay.
While we do that. So, I mean, we have it scheduled from 4:30 to 6:00 for the district office team.
She doesn't, which, it's just us doing our.
Oh, it's just us.
We're, we're not setting goals, we're doing the eval, yeah. Yeah, yeah, and then we do it.
Okay, okay.
Because it's us.
You don't want anything from me?
Well, we would have a discussion and then you would give us.
Because last year I gave you something before you all met.
Okay, do you want to give it to us, okay.
No, I'll work on it this weekend.
Okay. If you don't have time, I mean, we, I was just saying, it's a first meeting, so we could discuss the process because this is new for Carla.
That's fine with me.
So let's still do it, let's still do it anyway. If, if there's, if you have something for us by then, that's great, if you, if not, no big deal. But, but at least we can talk through the process, so, so we'll, so we'll, so we'll schedule a time after.
Yeah, because I, yeah, because otherwise, yeah, I don't want you to crunch through it. I mean, I just like, we just have to meet to discuss what the process is going to be so we can let you know, and then just to have a training for Carla, because she's never done it, that's why I was suggesting this. Because otherwise I'll just be like, mm, okay. Right, I think it'll be a lot to like discuss and do the training, and then like, and then now let's dive in to do it, I mean, I just.
At least I'll be more informed on it, which I would really appreciate.
So, well, all right, so Thursday the 30th, 6:00 PM, or whenever the district office board site meeting is over.
Perfect, since we're already here, so, good idea.
Oh, to the, to the, you'll, you'll meet after, gotcha. All right, do we, do we want to schedule the evaluation too then?
Yeah, I think, I, yes, and I think we would be looking at the, we'd probably do it in close on the regular board meeting of June 18th.
What, and, no, let's not do it on a closed session, but, then, yeah, yeah, that would only give us an hour?
But we could go afterward if we need to, or do we want to do a different day?
I think it should be on a different day.
We can do June 11th.
I have no life, so. I'm free.
Whatever works for me.
All right, let's, let's plan for June 11th then.
Cool, I was like, my kids are gone, I should be sitting at home by myself, it's sad.
Need a room reserved? Then you'd be like, son, I want to be alone. Ever, forever. Music to your ears that everyone's talking about tiered levels of support. Music to my ears.
Okay, so before we adjourn, we adjourn tonight's meeting in honor of Michael Strange, who passed away in May 4th, 2019. Mr. Strange was the husband of JHSC Adult Division Staff Member Sylvia Strange. Sylvia's beloved husband Mike passed away after a long struggle with cancer. Mike and his brother were born and raised in Canada. Mike came to the US when he joined the US Navy. After the Navy, he met Sylvia, and they have been married for over 40 years and have two children and six grandchildren. Mike loved sailing and had been retired from his career as a draftsman, where he specialized in the design of boats. Sylvia Strange has been part of JHSC Adult Division for 28 years and has worked in our Adult Secondary Education Program since June 18th, 1990. She coordinates GED and High School Diploma classes, is responsible for registration and enrollment, and fulfills many other clerical duties associated with running the GED, now Career and Education Center. She coordinates our Pearson View Testing Center and is a proctor coordinator for GED, CASAS, and other Pearson View tests that are offered at the center. We send our condolences to Sylvia, the Strange family, and the host of friends and loved ones. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I have a quick question first. So for graduation, are we going to get, like, can we get some direction from the principals on what they want us to do when we get there? Because we kind of are on the fly, kind of figuring out, like, what role are we supposed to play when we get there? Yeah, so it would be good to have that in advance. I never responded, but I thought I gave you my robe already. Okay, good, because I was like, I looked at my normal spot in the closet and it wasn't in there, okay, cool, cool.
Just making sure.
And then, like, are we going to have, are we going to have parking spots saved, like, that type of thing?
All right, let me find that out tomorrow.
Yeah. Because I'm going to be, because I do an OGM, so I'm going to be coming from work, so I don't know how early I can.
No reason, we can't have cones with your names on it.
Oh, that's fantastic.
That's typical, so, make that happen.
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
All in favor? Aye, all right. Meeting adjourned at 9:37 PM.
It was a great meeting.
Happy Grizzly night, everyone.
Rosie?
I was going to ask you to pause.
There will come a day.